Seeing none, like it's gonna be all like mother hen.
Well, you would be fine.
All right.
Guys, we are ready.
Mic's on? All right. We'll call the organizational school board meeting of January 9th, 2023 to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地无疆
All right, we'll begin with roll call, please. Mr. Ward. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Item number four is the election of a chairperson. We will open nominations for chairperson of the board. Jennifer McDonald served as chairperson during the past year. Are there any nominations? All right, there's a nomination for Jennifer McDonald. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate our vice chair, Amy Pockernich, for board chair 2023.
Thank you, there's a nomination for Amy Pockernich. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations for the office of chair are closed. We'll go ahead with a show of hands for voting. Those who are voting for Jennifer McDonald, please raise their hand. Clerk, please take note. Nominations for Amy Pockernich, please raise your hand. You're good? All right. Do you have a tabulation, Joe?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Number five is the election of vice chairperson and treasurer. We will open nominations for vice chairperson and treasurer of the board. Amy Pockernich served as vice treasurer, vice chair treasurer during the past year. Are there any nominations for vice chair treasurer? I'd like to nominate Amy Pockernich. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? And are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. Amy Pockernich is the only candidate nominated for the office of vice chair treasurer, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to record so in the minutes. Next on the agenda is the election of clerk. We will open nominations for clerk of the board. Lynn Peterson served as clerk during the past year.
I would like to nominate Lynn Peterson again.
Thank you very much. Lynn Peterson has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, the nominations for the office of clerk are closed. Lynn Peterson is the only candidate nominated for the office of clerk, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to record so in the minutes.
Nominated by Pockernich, etc.
Yes, yes. All right. Item number seven is bonding of designated district positions. The district has included $100,000, included $100,000 as a blanket bond for all positions under the current insurance carrier. Thus, a separate bond is not necessary. This requires a... Was it resolution? I just need to clarify. Okay, okay. So, looking for a motion for the bonding of designated district positions. Thank you, Larry. Is there a second? I can make that. All right. With a motion and a second, are there any questions regarding this standard? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number eight is a designation of official depositories. This motion will be to designate the First National Bank of Proctor, the Proctor Federal Credit Union, PMA Financial Network, Prudent Man Advisors, Members Cooperative Credit Union, and PFM Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund as the official depositories for ISD 704. We are looking for a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
All right, I heard Larry.
Sorry.
All right, I heard Amy, and then I heard Larry said that he would second. Are there any questions regarding this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. My apologies. All right. Number nine, board member compensation. This motion will be to set board member compensation for 2022 to 2023. Compensation has been $50 per meeting and $100 per month for chair and $60 per month for clerk. Looking for a motion? There's a motion by Joe, is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, Jim.
I heard Jim. Any questions regarding this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 10 is the designation of the official school newspaper. This motion will be to designate the Proctor Journal as the official newspaper of the district. Looking for a motion?
I'll make that.
Lots of people excited.
We're very excited.
Yeah.
I think so.
There's a motion by Kim, is there a second? Thank you, Larry. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 11, electronic transfer authorization. This motion will be to designate electronic transfer authorization to Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson or Robin Hanson. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 12, bank signature authorization. This motion will be to designate the following individuals as authorized signers for district accounts at the First National Bank of Proctor. General fund checking account, board chairperson and board clerk as check signers, Steven W. Anderson or Robin Hanson for all other non-cash transactions; petty cash account, Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson or Robin Hanson; flex account, Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson or Robin Hanson. And also to designate the following individuals as authorized signers for district accounts at Proctor Federal Credit Union, Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson; and also to designate the following individuals as authorized signers for district accounts at the Members Cooperative Credit Union, Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson. Looking for a motion? They want them separately? Okay. Backing up, we'll take care of First National Bank of Proctor if you wouldn't mind. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second?
I'll second that, par meter.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, and that motion carries. This next one will be to designate the authorized signers for district accounts at Proctor Federal Credit Union, Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson. Looking for a motion? Thank you very much. Larry, is there a second?
Second by Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 12C, designate the following individuals as authorized signers for district accounts at the Members Cooperative Credit Union, Carrie Gentinen or Steven W. Anderson. Looking for a motion? Thank you very much. Larry, is there a second?
I could second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 13, school board meeting schedule. This motion will be to set school board meeting dates and locations for 2023. Meetings are held at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Monday of each month, unless it's a holiday or otherwise noted, except during July and December when only one meeting is held on the second Monday. Meetings are held in the community room at the St. Luke's Sports and Events Center. Board meeting schedule as printed will be January 9th and 23rd, February 13th and 27th, March 13th and 27th, April 10th and 24th, May 8th and May 22nd, June 12th and June 26th, July 10th, August 14th and August 28th, September 11th and the 25th, October 9th and the 23rd, November 13th and the 27th, and December 11th. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second? Thank you, Larry. Does anyone have any questions regarding the board meeting schedule as presented? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 14, designation of school attorney. This motion will be to designate Maggie Walner of Kennedy and Graven Chartered as the official school district attorney, and also to designate the superintendent, business manager, and the school board chair in situations that require school board involvement as the district individuals authorized to contact our school district attorney. Looking for a motion? Thank you very much. Larry, is there a second?
Yeah, I could second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 15, designation of Minnesota State High School League representative. Joe Ward has served as the representative in the past. I'd like to nominate Joe Ward to continue serving as his representative with a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, Jim, or Larry, yeah.
All right. It's a motion by McDonald for Joe Ward to continue to serve, and seconded by Jim. Any questions at all?
Do you have to be nominated in order to... Have your name in it?
It's a designation, I don't know. And we just need to state it. We can certainly, I don't think we need to open nominations because it's not a statutory thing.
Okay. Sure. Do you have another idea of how we handle that one?
I don't know, I was just asking because I would be interested.
Okay.
That's why I was asking.
Sure. Well... I have... Sure, so we can certainly do a show of hands like we did before? If you'd like, we can certain... Or we could offer as an alternate. I'm fine either way. Board members?
Could we have each person, if they're... Each does me speak about why they'd like to serve? So we could...
Wouldn't it just go to a vote?
Yeah, I think it's just a vote. I don't think it's a, not a election per se with a candidate pool like that, I don't think. I didn't consider it. But I've got a motion on the floor to have Joe Ward serve as a representative, and it's seconded. Okay. I will withdraw and go with something similar to how we did chair. So I guess I'd like to nominate Joe Ward as a representative. Are there any other nominations?
Would you be interested in that? I'll nominate Amy Pockernich for our high school league representative. I know I nominated Joe last year. I do believe that change in leadership from time to time in these different categories is important, so I would put forth the nomination for Amy.
Okay. Thank you very much. So there's a nomination on the floor for Joe Ward and also one for Amy Pockernich. We'll go ahead with a show of hands for those who would like to select Joe Ward as the representative for Minnesota State High School League. And a show of hands for those selecting Amy Pockernich, please. Acting clerk, when you have a moment? Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 16, board member committee assignments. There's a note to review and update committee assignments for 2023. In the past, we've deferred this decision to the January 23rd or the February 13th, school board meetings. I have asked Lori to include the committee assignments in the packet for your review. So I guess I'd like to table this until the January 23rd meeting?
I agree, especially since Lynn's not here.
Right. Great, thank you very much. Board members, if there are committees that you are serving on right now that you no longer desire to serve on, please take some time over the next couple of weeks to consider that, and we can have a more board discussion during discussion and information at the 23rd meeting, and then we can bring it forth for a motion then on the 13th. Or can we make decisions at that time? Okay. So, you know, it's kind of a working conversation, a working document, so... But if, yeah, there's certain committees that you no longer wish to serve on, please let me know or us know when we have our conversation. And if there's something that you'd like to serve on, certainly an opportunity to have that discussion at that time. Yes. 23rd. Yes. Okay. Do we need a motion? Okay, yeah, we do. All right. Sure, sure. All those in favor of tabling the committee assignment decision-making until the January 23rd meeting, say aye.
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 Those opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item number 17 on the organizational meeting agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or concerns regarding that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Organizational meeting is adjourned at 7:24. Thank you. Yes. You're gonna take one minute here? All right. All right. Are we ready to roll into the regular school board meeting, everyone? Okay. A call to order the regular school board meeting at 7:25 PM. We'll start with roll call, please. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. That's right. You're welcome. All right. Item number three is an approval of the agenda as presented in your electronic packet. Looking for a motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Larry. Any questions regarding the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number four is an approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting of December 12th, 2022. Looking for a motion? Thank you very much. Larry, is there a second?
I'll second that, par meter.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding the minutes of the school board meeting of December? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number five is the finance report. This motion will be to approve the payment of bills dated December 12th and 22nd, 2022, in the amount of $274,947.90, covering checks 114911 through 115059, and approve the payment of bills dated January 9th, 2023, in the amount of $140,000, $140,884.61, covering checks 115060 through 115161, and to approve the electronic transfers and payrolls for November 2022, electronic transfers in the amount of $500,000 and payrolls in the amount of $1,759,960.73. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second? Thank you, Joe. Anyone have any questions regarding the finance report tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number six is commendations and congratulations. The board would like to commend our students, staff, teachers, and the Proctor community for contributing to the National Honor Society Coins for Toys fundraiser. The project earned just over $1,100 to purchase gifts for Bayview and Pike Lake Elementary students. The board would also like to commend and thank our boys hockey team for their generosity in delivering gifts to the residents at Benedictine Health Center. All right. Certainly bring all your commendations and congratulations to Lori's attention so she can add it to our next board meeting if you, as they come about here. We will move on to public participation, item number seven. The public comment, the school board meeting is a business meeting of the school district that occurs in the public. It is not a public forum. The public comment portion of our meeting is a time where we offer an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Once we move from this portion of our meeting, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the board. As a general rule, the board will listen to members of the public but will not comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. The board will not engage in dialogue, though any board member may ask questions. Please do not include the names of Proctor Public School students or employees, their title or building location, and your remarks for your own legal protection and the legal rights of our students and staff. Issues related to school district employees can be made in writing and can be directed to the Human Resources Department at Proctor Public Schools. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Speakers may not roll their time to another speaker. Please begin your presentation by stating your name, including the spelling, and who you represent if applicable. In the spirit of fairness to all participants, the board requests that you respect this format. Thank you for taking the time today to attend this meeting and share your concerns. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to address the board? Okay?
Oh, come on, Tom, let's do it.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda then, item number eight. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in your electronic packet.
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second?
Yeah, I could second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions regarding our consent agenda tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that motion carries. Items for individual action, item number nine. 9A, approve the first reading of suggested district policy changes. This is policy 903, visitors to school district buildings and sites. Looking for a motion? I'll make that motion, is there a second? Thank you, Larry. Any questions regarding this first reading of this policy? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. Item number 9B, approve and adopt district policies with minor changes. In accordance with policy 208, the board may approve policies at one meeting with minor or no changes. There are 36 of them. They include policy 534, school meals; policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies; policy 104, school district vision and mission statements; policy 404, employment background checks; policy 420, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections and diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions; policy 508, ESY for certain students with individualized education programs. ESY stands for extended school year. Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students; policy 517, student recruiting; policy 522, Title IX sex nondiscrimination policy grievance procedure and process; policy 527, student use and parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections, and searches; policy 528, student parental, family, and marital status nondiscrimination; policy 529, staff notification of violent behavior by students; policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds; policy 533, wellness; policy 601, school district curriculum and instruction goals; policy 602, organization of school calendar and school day; policy 613, graduation requirements; policy 618, assessment of student achievement; policy 619, staff development for standards; policy 620, credit for learning; policy 624, online learning options; policy 701, establishment and adoption of school district budget; policy 701.1, modification of school district budget; policy 702, accounting; policy 703, annual audit; policy 704, development and maintenance of a fixed asset inventory and management system; policy 705, investments; policy 706, acceptance of gifts; policy 707, transportation of public school students; policy 710, extracurricular transportation; policy 711, video recording on school buses; policy 712, video surveillance other than buses; policy 713, student activity accounting; policy 714, fund balances; policy 720, vending machines; policy 806, crisis management policy. We are looking for a motion.
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second? Thank you, Larry. Any questions at all regarding these policies with minor changes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries. All right. Polis, let's see here. We are on item 9C, adopt the resolution of accepting gifts received. Gift received on November 18th from the Lind Gordon Berg American Legion Auxiliary, a gift of $522.29 with the suggested use of the High School Angel Fund. Gift received on December 12th, 2022 from Jamar Gooden, PEX Tools Tubing and Fittings with the suggested use of the CTE Program Shop. Gift received on December 31st, 2022, K&amp;D Auctions, six boxes of new clothing with the suggested use of the Boxcar Program. Resolutions require a roll call, looking for a motion to start. Great, there's a motion by Larry, and there's a second by Joe. Any questions regarding these gifts? Very good. Thank you very much for pointing that out. All right, with a motion and a second in discussion, when our acting clerk is ready for a roll call, go ahead.
Um, McDonald.
Yes.
Parler.
Yes.
Pockernich.
Yes. Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Sheldon? Or yes?
Thank you. Item number 10. Items for discussion and information. We will begin with the superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in curriculum and instruction, we've had some continuing work with Ross Davidson. I think our math specialists, we've been hearing the talk a lot while we're reading, and you'll continue to be hearing the talk a lot while we're reading. For us to be able to work with our teachers in math, again, there are certain ideas here that we develop materials and embed in the MCA, MCA 3 guidance for high school algebra, two, high school geometry, measurement, high school data analysis, probability. And our teachers have been working with them already, and we're looking to more things. With Ross Davidson, he's outstanding with research work. And much of this is coming into our charters positions, so we're thankful for that. Today, Judy was working with the elementary schools on reading benchmarking. You'll hear more about that in the days to come. And we have a staff development day coming up on Monday, the 16th. And then, on meeting prefer, Jennifer, Jill, and I met a new team from Education Minnesota Proctor. And I just believe that these meetings are instrumental in building strong relationships. And I have notes that I'll be bringing back for our administrative team and Steve to talk a little bit about all of the people who improve some of the concerns that they may have. But those need to prefer, it's a, it's a very old sort of method of communication. It's very effective, because it's a time where you can just simply sit and chat. A lot of things that can be done. I enjoyed that session very much. Along with that, then, with handling grievances every once in a while, if they're running issues where there's a disagreement between administration and a collective bargaining contract, you need to know that if you believe that grievances all over the rise at different levels, for the most part can be resolved because of what we had today, we've solved the third one at Global 66. And just want to thank Steve for his help with, with me to understand and also the bargaining contract. And then also thank the leadership of the local businesses. They're, it was very, it was a great meeting. We understand each other. We have some grievances going forward now that we can work on. And obviously, there's a problem with some bargaining deal as far as language and how things can be done in that way. Just so you know, I'm very appreciative of our relationship that we're having with our, with our bargaining contract. You need to know that the principal evaluation is moving forward, and they'll have that. Teachers will get a chance to evaluate the principals with a survey. And the principals have the room, but we're still going to be judged, if you will. And so that will be happening at the beginning of February. And then finally, in that section, mental health. We did a survey in October, and Aubrey Hoover, who you may know or may not. Aubrey Hoover is our mental health specialist with the North East Service Cooperative. And she is helping me to piece together what some of those overarching things were. Three things that she talked a lot about that we recently had a meeting. One was workplace stress, barriers to communication, and then sometimes unrealistic expectations. And we, we've heard many times today that we have a hangover controller. And as we have a hangover controller, we also need to then deal with that as well. So that mental health component is extremely important to me. And I'll be working with Aubrey Hoover some more on that. We've had some things happen in transportation. And transportation is one of those areas where Chad Lowery has taken the whole by the horns and does a fantastic job of making sure that everything that has to be in place happens. And it happened in such a way that we're getting great marks from the people that we have to work with from Minnesota Department of Transportation. And so just know that Chad, who has been tested, is one of the coaches who graduated him, for keeping things in order and for cases. We've been having continued discussions with a world architects and engineers. They're, it's all agony of the person we've been working primarily. Steve and I have kind of been back and forth communications on how we use current spaces. We've talked a little bit about this before. And then what we also need to look at going into the future. Steve will hear more about that soon. And then, lastly, in that section, sometimes we cancel school because of weather. And when we cancel school, all activities are also canceled. But one of the things that happens is, there are some people that say, well, wait a second. I mean, if we can cancel school, why can't we come and skate? Or can we go into the gym, chew baskets? The answer is no. But with this caveat. We've worked it out so that at noon, on days when school is canceled, we're going to be in communication with all those people. And if we can go ahead and have activities in the evening, we're going to do it. An example might be last Wednesday, we had about a 780 inch snowfall. And there were a lot of schools in the area that canceled, we didn't get activities. We reached out to everybody and said, what are you guys thinking? All of them were like, you know, we think we're good to go. If we got our kids to school, let's do it. So instead of canceling, we made the decision to go ahead and let's have our activities. And that's how we're going to handle it. Because I think the most important part of this is that we have to make sure that we are equitable with all. So for example, the other, we had big snowfall. We could have had basketball for access, but we had the schools were open. But the hockey league wasn't even closed and having any of the rinks. We didn't have any of our outdoor rinks going out because a lot of, uh, removals and all clear of snow. So that wasn't fair. So I said, no, we walk around, it wouldn't be fair. If we can, if we can do it, we're making a decision by room with all the parties involved, then we're going to go ahead and have activities in the evening, if we can. Okay? So that's where, any comments or questions about that at all?
I, I thank you for that, that timeline, just because as it comes to spring, during, especially playoff times, we've run into snowfall that has disrupted a playoff schedule. And, but things have been fine by 2 o'clock, so that's, teams could have traveled. Different situations, I think, require just a little bit different or careful thought on it. But comfortable with making a decision for safety. If we can't open, then, you know, that's fine. I appreciate that, the work that went with talking to Paha regarding some of our agreements to have a tournament, and that we could have made it happen by that Friday at noon, which was fine. So I appreciate it.
We don't care if it's actually messaged on that. And if we do announce some genuine grievance with these few organizations that have been there a long time. And like you say, when our party math block is cleared, and when they are able to clear a ring for all four teams, they're coming on collaborating to do those things. Because those were the things that were agreed upon. And especially, I think, for when Paha partnered with us, in order to get work broken out. So, you know, I appreciate you looking into that and giving that. You know, we're going to certainly do the best we can. Is microphone working? Is this microphone working? Fair enough. It's a thing, so I'll just go. Uh, do you think that, one of the things you have to be is, you have to be reasonable, and you have to be intelligent of all decisions that you make. There's always going to be that chance that you're going to make that mistake of, of not, of not being careful enough. But then there's also that time where you're just way over the top. You don't need to be like that. And so just know that from my perspective, I'm always going to try to work with the organizations that we work with, that we partner with, and make things happen. That, that hockey tournament is a great example. We didn't have school that day, but we asked the city, are we going to have enough rooms to get in here for the tournament? And the answer was yes. Those are the kind of things that we need to do. Even though it says in policy, all facilities will be closed. We, we understand that, but we think we need to be smart about it. So that's, that's that. The community involvement, one of the things that I wanted to ask the board is, are there places that you'd like me to spend more time at, likely to go? Are there people you'd like me to see? Is there anybody that you'd like me to be reaching out to? Because I, as much as I try to integrate myself into the community and into the township, is there any place that you'd really like to see me be more? Like recently, most of my community activities have been revolving around some kind of activity. Right? So those are the, those are the things where I get to see a lot of people. And my good wife has reminded me that it's been kind of fun to watch the kids come and say, we have a school tomorrow. You know it's snow a lot. Are you ready to be here tomorrow? Those have been fantastic things. And I just wanted to know, is there any place that you'd like me to be more of? Yeah. Some of our old line players, a few players that's concerned with, uh, the past. And they always act like they're the best. Everybody in the sense, I don't think they work with minor? Eric Hall? Yeah. Just keep going. Eric, what do you know, it's your officer, you may have to react back. But if you want to break out, we know, and it seems like we're old. So then I will say this, though. If you do come across something, you see the one, it'd be really cool if you would do this, or we think it'd be really beneficial to the district. If you never hesitate to say, I think you ought to go. Because I would love to represent our school on your behalf, because that's what we do. We are Proctor, and probably Proctor Public Schools.
Carrie? Um, are you going to be at the St. Louis County Days? At the, at, in St. Paul, coming up in February?
There are, there are multiple opportunities for me to be in St. Paul.
Okay. Okay. All right. Because I know that's a large one that is coming up.
We have region, region 7 superintendents. There are times, there's more. Okay, there are. So, yes, I have to say my voice here for a while. There are times where you have to make a political decision on what do the legislators really want to hear? St. Louis County Days are fantastic.
Right.
Businesses, especially.
Yeah.
To be together, and for some of the local governments, associations, and foundations. But when we get a chance to go down there as superintendents, we are there very specifically with stories about education. And that's why I have to make the decision on when I'm going to be going down. I would like to be going with the superintendent group from Unit 7.
Okay.
I can't remember what day he does specifically. I think it's sometime in February, like the 26th or something like that, I want to say. But I will definitely be down there, and I've taken contact with our newest legislator in that week.
Mm-hmm.
And that was fantastic. She, I just graduated her on the first day, and she got right back to me. So we have that kind of connection with the local legislative. That's pretty great.
That's wonderful.
But they want to know what our story is. They don't want to, they don't want to hear the same story, like, oh, we want 5.5%. We need, you guys need to do something about cross subsidies. That's not what they want to hear. They want to hear the fact that we are going to have meaningful funding programs and people because we don't have the kind of funding in place that we need now in order to continue these really great things that we started in COVID. We believe that as a education platform, it's not about the money as much as it is the people that we have involved. So they have to pay money to do that. But at the same time, we have a $70 billion surplus. There's one-time money. And they're making sure that we understand that. Look, tell them the story that talks about what, what do you want to do with one-time money? Because that money might not be there in the next five years. And so that's what we're working on right now as an entire region. And we'll bring that down to St. Paul levels. But we're, I'm hopeful that the presence of our superintendents would be very helpful.
Wonderful. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Superintendent Junnen? I also just wanted to add, seeing you at the sporting events and the band concerts, and even at like the NHS induction, having just people from the upper levels of our school coming down and at our events and stuff, that's also very helpful. Just to know that all the students are being seen and heard, no matter what they're involved in.
It's my great joy to be there. It really, it's not hard. I went to wrestling, I mean, the thing of all wrestling, I'm here to tell you. But there was a lady in her mom's role, she was 12, same age as my mom's, she was 85. And she was yelling and hollering, and we're not serious, right? I'm saying, she was saying things like, use it, use it, use it! Bridge, bridge, turn it, turn it! It's like, this is the best day ever. And they said that, that there were more people out there than we even had at the city. And it's just like, okay, this is another event where our school gets to shine. And I hope you all saw, you already saw the paper about our wrestling. I'm here to tell you guys, there's something special about Proctor Public Schools. This is us. This is who we are. And that story is terrific. Because it does explain why we are who we are. And we don't have to read between the lines on that, but that was really, really good. I was so impressed. But I've never been to wrestling before. I have an ethical wrestling, for me. Never got to go to the live, that was my first one ever. And like they say, we're going to go to that next one. So, thank you. I, I really do enjoy watching you guys do this. And I heard a little bit about the voice only, and I just wondered. All right. One last thing that I'd like to add, January is our appreciation month. And so I just want you to know how much I appreciate all of you. I can say that, but we have some other things we sort of do all the time. So I just want to say, thank you for what you do as board members. It matters a whole lot for this entire community that you're one of the serving, and are paying for it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding the superintendent update from Carrie tonight? Before we move on? No? Well, mine's working. Yeah, that's the only one, huh? Three of them. Okay. Clear is closer when you speak. All right. We're going to move on to item 10B, MSBA Conference. Our Minnesota School Board Association conference begins this week. There are sessions being held tomorrow and as well on Wednesday. Board members will be traveling Wednesday night to the Twin Cities for the conference that we will, will have, well, it opens up on Thursday then and into Friday. The idea is that we will plan a board meal on Wednesday evening, is 6:00 PM too early. Okay. Depending on weather and things, if we have to stretch it to 6:30, we'll just communicate via text. But thinking about just someplace local enough where we can walk, if everyone's up for it. Sounds good. It's called. All right.
I just wanted, is everybody, okay, get down, is everybody down?
Yeah. You don't want to come with me? Okay. Okay. Yep. Perfect. Perfect. Did everyone get the booklet in the mail sometime in the last couple of weeks? There'll be more copies available if you forget yours at home. Would either of you like a copy of mine? Just to have, just to see? Okay. I'll just, I'll leave my copy with you guys, just to have, in case you have nothing else to do of the weekend. So. All right. Item number 10C, Strategic Plan Review and Discussion. Put this on the agenda as a point of discussion. Thoughts on this?
It's a place for the clerk to follow us. One of the things that I want to make sure we're doing is going back to that. You have it on the website, which I'd like you to keep removing. And if there's anything within that strategic plan that you think that we are not addressing properly, I need to know about that. Because that's one of the goals of MSBA, is when the group of strategic plan superintendent and the board together will make sure that the strategic plan that's put together for the communities is actually being followed. So that's why that's on the agenda. So, put it all down.
Okay. Great. Going along with that, we will probably bring this back then in two weeks and start the discussion of board goals, which may take us into February. And I was going to make that comment under communications, but since we're kind of talking about it, because the strategic plan should flow into board goals. And we may end up having a retreat of some sort we've talked about briefly in February. So just kind of putting that in your minds right now, that we need to work on some board goals. And it will be on the January 23rd agenda as part of the strategic plan update, et cetera. Any other comments or discussion on that right now? Okay. Public Relations Update. As always, the Proctor Journal is very generous in their coverage of the Proctor, or Proctor Public Schools. I'd like to highlight our Students of the Week. Britta Bergland, and Madison Walsh, and Grace Heine, and Peyton Reppe. Moving on to reports. School Board Committee Reports. In your packet, there is the Policy Committee Report as well as the Community Education Advisory Report. If you have any questions on those, certainly reach out to those who are providing the report for clarifications. Item 11B, Enrollment Report for January 2023 is in your packet as well. Just got to scroll to that for a second. Usually we see some changes going into February as people switch at semester time. Sometimes it happens after winter break, but kind of be.
Madam Chair, we did have a few people that had requested in the moment for the second semester and were in contact with them right now, to see if they're still understood.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I, I'm sure along with that, we've, we might have an idea of those people who have decided to leave the district at that time, yet maybe, as we balance that out. Okay, thank you. Alright, um, social media report is also in your packet. Let's go to average, I think, for where we're at. Alright, um, item twelve, communications, school board comments and observations. It's been a long month since we last met.
So I would like to say something, Joe.
Oh boy, Joe has his pen out.
Joe, are you ready? Yeah. I um, just wanted to point out, so it was in the Proctor Journal, but I did have Steve and Carrie come speak to a couple of my classes at Scholastica. And the advanced accounting class, actually, there's a couple that when they graduate, they want to reach out to Steve about business manage, being a business manager of schools. So that was kind of fun. Um, he did a great job on kind of explaining what a business manager does. It's not a tax accountant, it's not, it was just, it was great how he put it. And then I have some students that couldn't stop laughing at Carrie's presentation on just how he handled some HR things and just how you just roll with things. So I just wanted to really thank you guys for coming because they still talk about it. And the one that you talked about, talked with after Steve keeps wanting to get in touch with you, so you probably will hear from him, so just thank you. They see now why I get so excited to talk about Proctor, so thank you for doing that.
Very exciting.
So you said aye?
Don't worry, they taped it so you can record, you listen to it yourself, write it down. Remember seven fifty-eight, write that down and then you'll kind of know the timeframe.
You can make it up too, it's fine. Teasing.
Just go on the Proctor Journal, read that article and just, right on. There you go.
Any other board member comments or observations?
I would just like to make a comment about our organizational meeting from earlier this evening. Well, first of all, Jen, congratulations on your fourth year as board chair. It is very telling that our board leadership, our board continues to not only nominate you, but elect you. So I, I do congratulate you on that. I just wanted to share that I was able to nominate my peer, Amy Pockernich, for chair this earlier tonight. And I just want to share that it's no way a critique on your leadership, I think you should know that. And I would like my fellow board members to certainly know that as well. As someone who has been involved with nonprofit for a long time and working with boards and and leadership changes, I really think it's important that we, organizations really thrive from the, from the expansion of ideas driven through leadership change. And I think that's important to think about. Um, you know, municipalities change leadership annually typically. So it's, it's a little, it's a little different to have four years in a row, but I just want, I just wanted to make a point of, of saying that I, I think we do have wonderfully talented leaders on this board that would serve us well. And sometimes change is good, but I would like the rest of the board to join me in congratulating officially Jen as our board chair for twenty twenty-three. It is well deserved and clearly, you are, you are appreciated and I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. I think it, it's healthy and I, I think, I think leadership change is good, but I appreciate your service and I know that you've described it as your passion to lead this board, so appreciate all that you do. And Amy, I think you would be a great chair someday and I hope you, you continue to, um, you can, you continue to be a leader from within on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, it's an honor to serve the board and the Proctor Public School District as a whole. Thank you.
Yeah, you're good at the policy stuff too. You read this stuff really good, yeah.
Forty-six.
Better you than me.
And a big drink of water. Well, thank you, thank you. I know Lynn keeps telling me I need, I need a new hobby, but I, I do enjoy this very much, um, working with you all and serving this school district. So thank you.
Any other comments or observations from the holiday? I, I guess I'd just like to reach out and just thank our buildings and grounds departments for getting our buildings cleared out of snow as quickly as they could. Um, I know we touched base earlier in that day and you said, I'm out here plowing, I'm, we're working on it. And then we had that conversation later in the day, like, I don't think this is going to work. And it's, it's okay to say that, it's okay to try really hard and I appreciate the dedication to getting things ready to go because we were certainly ready and wanting our students in school. Like you, I get the phone calls and the questions from the students and I, I joked that my son's high school graduation senior quote should have been, little did you know, I've been the superintendent's secret weather advisor for the last decade. Because everyone calls us. But I'm, I'm always the last to know as far as that goes. But, but I don't think we make these decisions lightly, I think we do it out of the safety of our kids. Uh, we don't want school buses stuck in deep snow. We don't want them stuck in deep snow and having it be really cold and having students chilled and waiting for tow trucks that are unable to get there as well. So we make the good decisions and the hard decisions that we need to, and I appreciate that, that we can do that. Any other comments or observations? Larry's the weatherman out in Saginaw. Alright, um, ready to hear from our student liaison board members with their comments, observations and end of the semester anxieties?
Okay, so I just have three quick things to wrap us up. Um, first off, we had a meeting about the parking lots and students' parking with Mr. Roweder and Mr. Anderson too. Uh, that was run through student government and it's just nice to see the organizations really getting involved in what's happening at school. Uh, the next thing is, snow week is coming up and everyone's just getting excited for snowball. I feel like dances really give everybody a, a thing to get excited for, to get dressed up and have fun with your peers. So that's always fun. And then lastly, we have the Gichi Gumi invite coming up for the Alpine skiers and Proctor has two skiers, um, that's Britta and Tobias. They'll be competing and this is their, um, their home ski meet, so they'll be hosting this one over at Spirit. So I just thought I'd give a little shout out to them for that.
For my comments, um, probably, some of you may have already heard, um, the wrestling team has been having some issues with their mats. A few students came to me, um, actually yesterday to talk about it and a few of the coaches as well. So I was just wondering if there was any like, um, steps being taken towards that and then also to congratulate them on having an awesome season so far. And then another little funny story I have is for Joe. The malet students were looking through some old newspapers of the malet and we found a very nice picture of you leading some students in a chant for pep assembly and I thought that would be nice to share, so.
Did he have hair? I asked if he had hair, that was my first question. She's not answering. It's okay if you couldn't tell.
Good stuff, guys, thank you. I don't have any comment regarding the mats, but I'm certain that people. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, and then, um, it's more of like the practice mats that they have. They told me something about practicing on turf. That's just what was said to me. I don't know the exact things about it, but yeah.
Sometimes things bubble at the surface and just don't get to the right places before the right people that can make decisions know about it, so I appreciate the info. Alright, thank you very much. Moving on, communications, any township or city communications that are new or upcoming?
The only important maybe township on those, uh, Slowway Township, the state of Minnesota is planning on a turn lane real near, left turn lane near the town hall, the town hall closing up a large part of their entrance. It might affect some of our school lessons, um, as far as that construction period, but right now they're able to appeal to the state, asking the big white mail, they, they want to close that entrance off completely on number two and they're appealing that and asking for the, uh, board to voice, so that's what they're working on right now.
Okay. Good deal, thanks for that. Alright. Yuck. Alright, number, item number thirteen is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy, is there a second? I'll make that. Any questions before we adjourn? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Actually, yeah, motion carries. Eight oh seven, thank you. I'd like to say this afterwards, um, you'll see in your packet that there is mileage reimbursement forms as well as reimbursement vouchers for your hotel stay and any food expenses that you incur down there. So just keep receipts for that and turn that in with your vouchers. And then there's your mileage voucher. We'll give that to Lori and she'll submit to Robin. You'll get a separate check in the mail for that. And then your meeting stuff that, that just goes on your regular quarterly voucher.
Alright, fine.
I'll call her tomorrow to see if she needs it typed up. How about that?
Yeah, because I'm just looking, does she normally? I mean, you just have to X it.
And then type it up though, right?
Yeah, but if Carrie can just send you that, you can just copy paste it into the.
Into what?
Into the notes.
Like copy and paste it, is that what it says?
Yeah, if Carrie can send that to you electronically.
Oh.
You can just copy and paste it in there.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
You're not going to do it, you're going to give her the paper. I can already feel what you're going to do, so don't look at me like you're some matter of fact.
I'm on top of it.
Let me see your chicken scratch.
Thank you for that, Britta.
We're at a crossroads. From time to time, a section of rail needs repair, but that doesn't mean the whole line needs replacement. The same way being proud of your history doesn't mean you're stuck in the past. No, we're not stuck. We hear the whistle blowing and we're inspired. Inspired by the legacy of the people who transformed this terrain into a rail yard that supplied America with the ore needed to win world wars. We're inspired by our unshakable identity, hanging tight like David facing down Goliath. And we're moved by stories of our community's kindness. No matter who needs help, neighbors pitch in and get the job done. Hushed and humble, there are more at play than pontification, but don't for one second think that means Proctor is a simple small town. It was built as a company town and it continues down the tracks of time. And this rail revival is our destination.